This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting and Budget Review for March 10, 2020. To begin this evening, as is the case with each of our regularly scheduled Board of Education meetings, we offer the opportunity for public participation. Any members of the public that are with us here in attendance who wish to address the Board on any matter may do so. I ask that you raise your hand. I'll ask you to step to the podium, please. Give us your name and address. And you can ask a question, make a brief statement. And we'll go from there. So is there anyone who wishes to address the Board during public comment? Back row is excluded from that this evening.
Seems to be a tech.
Our staff back there.
Principal Tappens.
And a microphone right above them.
Actually, hey, direct message and text us comments all the time. All right, thank you. Board members, then please, a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
By Larry, seconded by Christina. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion, please, for approval of minutes from our February 25, 2020 Business Meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Andrea and seconded by Larry. Any questions or does anyone have anything to add, delete, or bring to attention otherwise from those minutes of February 25? Pay no attention to that man if you don't. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Primary focus of our agenda this evening, we do have a number of items, but the primary focus this evening is to update the Board and the community on our current budget status and have a budget discussion with us, with Dr. McGowan and Lou Alimos, so I turn it over to Dr. McGowan at this point.
Thank you. So this is the updated budget presentation. I'm just pausing because there's feedback in the microphone, so I'm trying to fix the audio. This is the updated budget presentation. From the last time we met, we've made adjustments and now are presenting to you tonight some strategies to close the gap between projected expenses and revenues. So I just want to walk through first some of the fundamentals that we are operating from at the outset. The projected revenues, of course, going into next year. As we always point out on the pie chart on the left-hand side of your screen, the property tax for us makes up the lion's share of our revenue. Federal state aid, about 20 percent, local sources, seven and a half percent. And fund balance, which is essentially also local taxes, the large part being that. It is the money left over from the previous year that is planned, that's an appropriated fund balance from savings that goes towards paying our bills then the following year. The state and federal aid, though, is important to pay attention to because if that slice was as big as it should be, our property tax in the blue would be far less. And that's a concern, of course, we have over and over again. And I'd make the argument that since we have an $8 million gap, which I'll show you, that's 16 percent difference in the property tax levy, 16 percent difference at $8 million. And the bar chart on the right-hand side shows you the sources of new funds, or $3.6 million going into next year. Capital interest being the orange bar, second only to the tax levy again, as the projected revenues again making up 66 percent going into next year. And new revenue-wise, foundation aid being a relatively small amount in that picture of the lion's share, again being the property tax. The gap that I mentioned to you, the gap between foundation aid that should be paid and what is being paid is illustrated right here. There is an $8 million gap. The orange and blue put together are what we should be getting, and that would be just over $16 million. That is based on real kids. So again, the quick primer on that is the formula accounts for every different type of child you have in your district, the number of children you have in the district. It does also account for the district's ability to pay. It accounts for the district's ability to pay. And I point that out because some people would say, well, you know, you can make it up in the property tax because you may be a place that can afford that. Well, no, we can't. First of all, the formula already gave you less assuming that. And while the formula was assuming you could pay more, your ability to tax has been kept. Not that we would like to tax more, but the point is it's irrational and illogical. Within the formula, they're already giving you less because of your district's ability to pay. And then on the other side, the ability to pay actually can't be utilized because of the property tax gap, even if it should be or could be, it can't. So the gap for us, based on, again, real kids drive that number. We'd have over $16 million and we're budgeting here just over $8 million. So an $8 million gap between what the state should be paying and what they are paying. And again, that's a 16 percent difference in property tax because of the state's lack of funding fairly inequitably, especially relative to districts right around us. So take a look at the left-hand side. In this bar chart, it shows similar districts, the average of our peer group across the state. They're receiving 81 percent of the total, 81 percent. So for us, that would be over $12 million of the 16 that we're due as opposed to the eight that we're getting. So a pretty significant difference there in that number. If we had just what our peer group was getting, not even the full boat, we would take 80 percent of the 100 percent that we are due and be in a pretty fantastic place. But we are being promised right now 51.8 percent. That's in the governor's proposal. So the two houses still have yet to put forward their proposals and then come to agree with the governor on a final budget. We're certainly hopeful there will be an improvement in that number. We've really pushed hard, as has Fight for Brighton, as has the Brighton Teachers Association through Nicent Lobbying, for an increase in the equitability or the fairness in the distribution district to district. And again, the quick peek into that, we point out to people all the time when they say, well, that's just not fair. It's against the law. How could they do that? Well, it's certainly not fair. But here's the big picture. There are 700 districts in the state. They all look very different. The formula should equalize distribution. The formula should be fair based on the kids you have. The problem is the state has traditionally funded public schools using a shares concept, which is entirely a political agreement. You won't find anywhere in legislation, you won't find anywhere, for all the thousands of people watching right now on the live screen, can Google the shares concept. There's nowhere in the law that the shares concept exists, except that every year, if you look at the way state aid is paid, every region in the state has gotten the same share for many, many, many years. So New York City, 39 percent of the state's children will get about 39 percent of the aid. Whether or not they should have gotten 50 percent of the aid or 20 percent of the aid available, they have gotten that share. Long Island, the same thing, whatever people's numbers may have driven differently, up or down, they're ending up with their share. If we were to get more in our district, we trend differently than other districts. Our free junior dual-digit trade has gone up faster, our ENL population has gone up faster, social education population. And by the way, our numbers of kids have gone up while other people have shrunk. If we got what we were due, it would throw the shares off for this region pretty significantly. So of the 700 districts, if you talk to somebody in Yonkers, if they care very much about what happens to us, maybe Yonkers is a great example because Senator Merritt, Chair of the Senate Education Committee is from that area, and she does seem to care. But let's say Poughkeepsie, I don't think that they're very worried about what happens in Brighton inequity. They want their share. And so understanding that, that's the situation we're in. The other piece, when people say, well, that's illegal. How could they do that? You should sue. It's not against the law. The budget, when it's developed every year, is the law. So the formula is the starting point. But nowhere in state law does it say they must honor the formula from the year before. That's a starting point that they use, but then they create essentially a new formula every year using those basic tenants. But when they divide the money up and they accomplish their political objective through the shares, it becomes the law. And so that is going forward what is legal and what is agreed to by the state government. So it's wildly unfair, but not necessarily legal either. So we continue to work with that as a problem. I think it's important to point out that over time, our need has also gone up 39 percent. And yet, even that growth, so that 39 percent that we've gone up over time based on our kids and our needs, they've only funded 57 percent of that growth in need. So not only did we not make progress towards what was due to us in the first place, but the increase in need over the period of time going up 39.2 percent, they've only funded just over half of that amount as well. The tax cap calculation, we would like to provide you an update on that very briefly. We presented to you a tax cap calculation of 3.3 percent previously. You acted on that. We submitted that number to the state. You don't need to act on it. We do that publicly with you, so people are aware of that number. Very important to point out some of the fundamentals here. This is not a 2 percent property tax cap. 2 percent or less are one of the multipliers in the cap. But the calculation itself can yield very different numbers for different districts and have yielded very different numbers for us over time because some things are excluded, some things are included, and every district's numbers are a little bit different. For us, we are allowed to exclude part of the change in taxes needed for paying debt service starting next year. $1.6 million, and we can exclude 47 percent of that change, of the increase in taxes we would need for that. So in other words, they're trying to protect taxpayers from having all of their new revenue in one year gobbled up by one new expense. And there's a calculation for how much of that you can exclude from the levy calculation, from how much you're able to increase. And we can exclude 47 percent or a million dollars basically from that and add that back to our allowable growth in the levy. We are also allowed to exclude money that is being paid in this year for the BOSI's project that we have to contribute towards. Again, the idea being, why would you penalize districts who have to pay into a BOSI's project and not allow them to raise that equivalent amount of money to go towards the program in their district? So why would taxpayers not be able to raise that money from themselves to support the program in their district? If you took those pieces of spending together, none of our property tax cap increase would be able to go towards program increases the following year. That combined with the state not paying aid, we'd be in a pretty disastrous situation. So you can exclude those pieces. The result of that and that continued calculation for us is we know now that our cap number is 3.83 percent instead of 3.3. So that's the very direct saying to the community as we continue to recalculate that. This is the final number now. Our cap number is 3.83, and that's the allowable growth in our levy by New York State's calculation going into next year. Our preliminary budget, what does the spending look like? So the other side of the ledger. Right now, we're looking at an increase of 7.6 percent in spending going into next year. That's five and a half percent on the operations side and 2.1 percent in terms of capital. That breaks out to 3.2 percent of that being an increase in salaries overall, not an increase to each person's salary, but rather the spending in that line. Benefits will be up about six and a half percent. That's a reduction from what we presented to you before because we've been able to reconcile that line further as we went through the January timeframe with our health insurance plans this year. Our BOSI's cost is up by $940,000. Supplies services up $883,000. And the debt service that we've talked to you about before, so the implementation of the project passed by voters in 2017, that's $1.6 million going into next year. That leaves us with a gap of $2.4 million, $2.490,142. The key is that's down from the 2.7 we presented to you. And the reason for that is the increase in revenue from the cap going from 3.3 to 3.8. So that is one way that we've been able to slowly close that gap between what will be coming in and what will be going out. Where's that going to go? Largely to instruction and program, of course. Salaries, wages make up 44 percent of our spending, benefits 27 percent. So in all, 71 percent of the money coming in goes right back to program. So does the spending on supplies and services, of course. That is a program expense. BOSI's is an additional program expense. And debt capital being actually a very small part of the puzzle for us, just 5 percent of that spending. It looks like a bigger piece as we go into this year because of that lift of bringing a car payment into our budget, but it is still just 5 percent of our spending. Our teaching spending is 29 percent. Instructional support, additional 5 percent. The vast majority of that, we have a very small amount of administrative spending, particularly when compared to like districts, we have a very lean allocation that way. And we're suggesting, in fact, an adjustment to make that even more lean as we go forward for next year. We gathered feedback from the community in this process as well and asked them what they thought. First through a thought exchange, generally, what would you like us to do? What would you like to see in the budget going forward? What are your suggestions, your thoughts, your comments? And then we held community forums on February 25 and March 3. They were also Facebook Live events, and we had people come and join us in person. And we shared a general summary of the information that was shared to us in the exchanges and really asked people to weigh in on that, really to triangulate the data. Tell us a little bit more, they were like focus groups. Tell us what that meant. What do you think people meant when they said this, when they said this, when they said this? And we were able to break people up into groups to really weigh in on clubs and activities, athletics, additional programming, extended studies, all the non-mandates, to hear a little bit more about advocacy, to weigh in on that aspect of this as well, really to kind of help us understand where people are coming from in the exchange. What we took away from that is that people in this community would like us to keep cuts away from students as much as possible. Programming is most important to people in our community. Keep as much of it as you can. Reducing is better than eliminating. These are paraphrases of what we heard from people. Don't propose a budget over the cap. That was very clear from folks. They don't want to see us do that at this point. The community values all programming that is beyond the mandates, to varying degrees, right? So within the exchange or even the feedback, the community forum feedback, some people would have a preference for an athletic program versus an arts program, or an arts program versus an athletic program, extended studies or additional AIS. So we tried to really understand what a consensus could be without having the entire community in the room. But clearly, the community does seem to value all programming. And they were essentially asking us to make some hard choices post-budget last year. Another focus was keep Brighton, Brighton these programs define who we are, and we should still reflect that. So some of the challenge for us in this is how do you do that when the choice was to reduce some of those programs going forward? How do you find that balance? And we think we've been able to strike some of that balance in the reductions we're suggesting. And keep advocating, which has not stopped. It will continue all the way through this process. It does all year long, but we've continued to have meetings with legislators in Albany and express our perspective. And we will continue to do that throughout, very directly, very doggedly. And we would encourage people to look at the Fight for Brighton Facebook page, contact legislators, do the things that they're asking as well. We think that's very, very helpful, and we appreciate that support. So the process to reduce our expenditures, so now we still have this gap to close, right? We mentioned about $2.5 million. What does that look like? Well, for us, we're suggesting a reduction in service of $615,000. Now I want you to keep that in perspective. Of a $2.5 million gap, we're proposing just $615,000 of that be in actual programming to our community. The other places I would refer to as strategies. These have an impact long-term. This is a real key point for people to understand and focus on. Last year, when the over-the-cap budget did not pass, we were sent a lot of strong messages by our community. And we very easily could have, in that moment, cut program pretty significantly, right? In that moment of crisis, in that moment of here's what we don't want you to do. We don't want you to raise our taxes this high. It would have been very simple to cut programming. It would have actually made this budget process easier. It would have been the simple answer. You were not interested in the simple answer. Your direction was to find ways to do that in as the most harmless ways we could. So like protecting program, protecting people, protecting kids from those reductions, even if it meant challenges going forward. Not challenges to put us in a deficit situation, not challenges that would put us in any kind of jeopardy. But you were saying, if there's ways that we could use revenue right now that's in the budget to pay for certain things, to keep program, that we know will have a longer-term implication, but that we can plan for those, we can study those, we can have thoughtful implementation of changes, let's do that instead of just slash and burn, cut everything right now, because that's the simple answer. The simple but most harmful answer. The simple answer, but that would hurt program, hurt people, hurt our staff as well. You weren't interested in that. You were interested in, let's do this the right way and have time to think about these programs. So where we said, we will need to take from the budgeting of kindergarten positions in 2021, use that money to support program now, or equipment requests, use that money to support program now. But those things come to roost later on, and we'll talk about those in a minute. This proposal, though, includes continuing some of those strategies and thinking about other ones in different ways so that we can avoid cuts to program, knowing that there will be an implication later on. Now, the hope always is that while we push some of the problem down the road, we do this very openly, very transparently, eyes wide open to the idea that hopefully there will be more revenue in the future. Hopefully, the state aid picture will get fixed and it will be helpful in that. But if that doesn't happen, and we understand that that may not happen, we will have time to reasonably and rationally plan for program reduction instead of the easy cut, which is a problem and really impacts people pretty significantly. And I'll explain a little bit about what we're getting in terms of reducing instead of eliminating program altogether. So cost deferrals, financing strategies would be another $515,000. We have also been able to update some of our projections. I mentioned the health insurance one is a good example. When we get to the January timeframe, we're able to really do more analysis in terms of who's on the plan, who's not on the plan, and analyze that going forward. And we're able to get down another $695,000 out of that space. And then efficiencies that we're able to find also of another $140,000. So those are all things that will not impact staffing at this point. The $615,000 absolutely does. The more detail on that, the updated projection, the health insurance premium is both the participation mix and looking at what they will be going into 2021 and adjusting our model was a reduction of $430,000. Staffing projections that in the initial budget, we said to you, we think we'll need these positions. We've been able to make adjustments now down $200,000, and those would have been additions to staff as opposed to existing positions. And then the health and safety equipment, we are going to purchase now out of surplus at the end of this year, so those are one-time revenues to make $65,000 of purchases out of the cap or with the capital fund. So we could take that out of what we're projecting going into next year's budget. And then the cost deferral strategies, that other bucket, the kindergarten staffing, and I've mentioned that example a couple of times, the 2021 allocation for that, so the positions that we've kept in the budget, knowing we'll need those, was $225,000. What we're going to do a little bit differently is look at the full-day conversion aid that we will get for kindergarten conversion. We'll get 100 percent of that aid in year one, 65 percent in year two, 35 percent in year three, and we won't get any in year four. The point is, we'll use that aid to pay for those positions that we wanted to budget for, knowing that over those four years, we will need to build that back up so that those positions are paid for when the aid stops. So we had hoped to avoid having to build that back up and be able to use that aid differently. We will have to budget that for those positions so that we can use that $225,000 now to save program, to reduce then our overall expenditures. And then full-day kindergarten busing, our 2021 allocation to save towards that was $90,000. And now we're able to use our appropriate fund balance and then supplant with transportation aid. So we're building up the right number of buses going into next year and then use our transportation aid that follows the year after. So we're just bridging the gap right now with surplus going into next year. And that was just another strategy we were able to use for $90,000. And using other short-term revenues to pay for the interest expense until building aid flows in '21, '22, that's another $200,000 that we're able to account for and avoid cutting program. The impact of those debt offsets, just keep in mind right now, the building aid is at $1.8 million we're budgeting going into next year. That will drop to $800,000 in the year after, and you can see then a subsequent drop over time. But it will drop going into next year. The capitalized interest that we need to put in this year of $1.2 million will not be an issue going into the '21, '22 budget. That $730,000 on the top is important to point out, as is the $170,000. And that's building aid and local levy. So the local levy needed is $730,000. It will be 1.2 going into next year. But the building aid going into the '21, '22 budget will go from $170,000 to $3.6 million. And then you'll see where that will be consistent for us in the five years that follow. So we really level it off at that point once we can get this into place going into next year. Cost-reduction strategies, the detail around program, the $151,000 is important for you to understand as a board as we move forward and for our community to understand. We're looking at the reduction of the Assistant Director of Humanities position. Be really clear on that. We are cutting in this proposal the Assistant Director of Humanities position and consolidating administrative positions going into next year. And we will work through how duties are assigned, looking at the Director of Student Services position and currently the mental health position that is supported by Betsy Balling at the high school in combination of the work that Deanna Spagnola is currently doing in the Assistant Director of Humanities position, and how those three things, those three current positions, will become two positions. So we are cutting, we know for sure, the Assistant Director of Humanities position and looking at those other two positions for those duties. That's a $100,000 reduction approximately. The high school will lose two positions. That'll be a $100,000 reduction, makes up 1.19 percent of the levy, and that will impact elective selections and class size. At the middle school, we'll be restructuring the team teaching model, reducing sixth grade foreign language to a half-year program. And I want to pause there and point this out. This is instead of cutting the whole program. This is that idea of how can we reduce and still offer something that keeps Brighton, Brighton, that is unique to us, give kids exposure to a program that we think is important, valuable, and valued by our community, without eliminating it altogether, and find a way to manage that in the current financial context. Likewise, we would look, and I'll jump down to French Road right now, restructuring the delivery of fourth grade instrumental music. Kids of fourth grade will still all have the opportunity to play an instrument. It will be a pull-out program only, though, but every child will still have that opportunity. That's a reduced amount of time on that instrument. Instead of being scheduled for it and having pull-out, they will just have the pull-out program right now. And that will shift a 1.5 position reduction. The middle school, the other position adjustments I mentioned to you, the team teaching model, so people will end up cross-teaming and cross-grade level. And again, the foreign language issue, and then staffing enrollment adjustments for a total of 5.6 positions, and French Road is one and a half positions. And finally, K-3 will be restructuring the coaching, the instructional coaching model, which will impact professional development, and that's by one position for an accounted-for adjustment of $50,000 or 0.09 percent of an impact on the levy. The next steps for us are to analyze the one-house proposals as they come out. They should come out any day now. And we really hope for more fairness in distribution. We are, it is March 10th, correct? Just tend to lose track a little bit. They need to have a budget in place by the end of March. We are concerned that there are not one-house proposals out yet for people to react to, weigh in on, or for negotiation to happen with the governor, recognizing that a lot of the negotiation happens in about the last few days. However, there is concern there, and we would like to see those as soon as possible. We will continue to advocate, as I had mentioned before. The next two bullets are in italics because I want people to recognize, a little bit different. We'll continue to monitor our budget, actual projections, analyze assumptions that we've used in the preliminary budget, and continue to look for potential reductions or make adjustments even to what I've previously presented and report those to you. We'll collaborate with building principals to keep looking for efficiencies, cost-reduction strategies, and understand the consequences of those spending reductions. We are trying as best we can to make those reductions in areas where there is attrition, in other words, retirements or people leaving positions, to spare as many people from actually losing their job. But we are also balancing that with the need to make sure we protect program and have the right offerings available for kids. We have a budget forum on March 19th from 12 to 1:30. That's next Thursday, right here in the boardroom. We will analyze and adjust based on feedback at that point. We have the proposal on March 24th and the budget hearing. We will still analyze and adjust at that point based on feedback that we receive. And then we will make final adjustments and present to you on April 14th, a final budget for your consideration, so that you can be prepared to present that to the community. We will discuss that with community members throughout then the next month, April 14th, through, of course, the vote on May 19th. And the vote is, as I said, on May 19th. So we hope that people are able to participate in that as well. I should also make the first announcement. The Kiwanis spaghetti dinner will be held at BHS. Questions for me?
I don't know if we have any specific questions. Kevin, you and Lou have briefed us ahead of time. We continue, as we have said to the public, we continue to work through the process of coming up with a budget that can work. We're at a point now, as you laid out this evening, where it's an unfortunate spot in that we are talking about some reductions. Quite frankly, it's not as bad as it could have been based on the numbers when we first looked at them. And so we're very appreciative of leadership team, but especially you and Lou and Debbie and the entire group working hard at step-by-step, position by position. We're making a number of assumptions. We're continuing to take actions now that we need to, defer actions into next year and the year after where we can. They'll still have to be dealt with, as we've frequently talked about. But trying to reduce the impact in the classroom is, to the extent possible, we do appreciate. As you mentioned, we are hopeful, and you know, we continue to have conversations with Albany. We're hopeful that the final budget, we need to see the one-house budgets first. You know, those should be really publicly known and publicly available shortly. There's a couple of difficult matters, though. And Kevin will talk, I know in his superintendent's report, a little bit. But certainly COVID-19 and coronavirus situation, that has taken up almost all of the air in Albany and New York City and all school districts right at the moment. And certainly also within the Capitol and within those budget discussions and negotiations. So not only is there, are there fewer hours in the day to work on this and try to get all the things that everybody wants in a budget, but there also is some growing concern about dollars. Not only dollars required to continue to prepare and fight the circumstances of how this may play out over the next few months, but then also possible decrease in depressed revenues from the financial ramifications of what we're dealing with. So we don't know. We're hopeful. We continue to talk to those. So we don't know, we're hopeful, we continue to talk to those who we believe can help us, we continue to make the equity argument for districts like us that are below 60%, certainly below, as you use the number, 80%. Eventually, that has to get fixed. It's just a pure and simple equity issue and someone or some entities eventually have to step in and fix that. We're hopeful that part of it will be done this year, just no way to know right now. So we will continue to work on that part of it. We welcome the community to continue to weigh in. Most of our material for this evening is already posted online on the website. Everything will be posted. We will make sure that the entire budget update is, if it's not posted already, we'll get it posted as soon as possible so that residents can take a look at it in detail. We do have the opportunity, a week from Thursday, with an afternoon budget forum at noon here in this room and then at our next meeting on the 24th. So, but residents, please, feel free to weigh in. You can email us, you can contact us directly by phone, text, whichever you'd like and we will continue to evaluate, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on tonight then, we also have our principal reports, so we will hear from all four of our buildings this evening. A little bit of anomaly in that we, because of the way the schedule worked out this year, we've got sort of business meetings back-to-back and principal reports and not principal reports, but we are very enthusiastic to hear from our principals this evening and Dr. McGowan's played a little bit of a roulette up there to tell us who's going up first. It looks like the winner is Council Rock and Principal Matt Tappin.
Winner winner chicken dinner. Good evening, everyone. So we've had lots going on at Council Rock since our last report. One of our biggest days was our district-wide Brighton Believes in Caring Day just last week, March 4th, seems like a lot longer ago. So great pictures taken by Dan Goldman as well as teachers. Every student participated in at least one project and I thought this was just a great list of the projects. So over 500 braided toys for dogs, 14 fleece-tied blankets for the Mia Foundation, 18 papier-mache toys for animals at the Seneca Park Zoo, blankets for children at the Community Child Care on Troop Street and the Mount Hope Family Crisis Center, dog food and cat food divided for someplace in Webster. Ronald McDonald House was a new project, tons of snack bags for families who were staying in the hospital, some great birthday cards for residents at Woodside Manor and then also for some children staying at Galisano Children's Center. Some beautiful, they really were beautiful centerpieces made by some of our second grade students at the Jewish home and then some things for Bethany House and the Willow and House of Mercy. So just really great. Again, I can't say enough and I just need to plug, the PTSA really, really supported us in this at Council Rock. The teachers get to pick up a bag that has all the directions, all the materials located inside it. It's got a great little description of the agency that we're doing the work for and a little history of what they do so that they can read that to the kids and share. Some of them come with videos that the teachers can share a little bit more or a how-to about it and then they return it and then it all gets delivered. So we couldn't do it without the PTSA at our level, so we really appreciate their support. I talked about, we talked about science a couple of meetings ago, so I thought this was a really good follow-up. Second grade teachers participated in a new science unit. This is a mapping unit and how science and map, so cartography, that our second graders will be participating with later this spring, but all the teachers participated in incredible professional development provided by the Smithsonian Group. Oh, our own Nicole Yearley's made it, so you'll hear a little bit more, I'm sure, but Nicole was able to travel to Israel over February break. This is Enat, who was my host while I was there, so this is a connection back again with our connected school and Nicole came back with all kinds of great ideas that we're going to look to continue to keep that connection alive. So it was the 100th day, right around the break, so somewhere before, somewhere after, but you can see Mrs. Allen here is dressed as a 100-year-old and then it is a great tradition to have many kids come dressed as 100-year-olds or an aging, what they hope to do when they are 100. So it's really a great, great time celebrating the 100th day of school. Kristen Cooper and Aaron Dwyer invited a local karate expert to come in and teach a unit to all of our students about karate and just a great, another example of lifelong kind of leisure activities that kids can be a part of. Several of our teachers are doing March Madness. Instead of the basketball, they are doing it book style, so they've got books that are read, competing against each other. So this one, you can see Giraffe Problems versus Giraffes Can't Dance or Dragons Love Tacos versus Dragons Love Tacos 2: The Secret. And then the kids vote and eventually, at the end of March, there will be a winner, so. Yep. Upcoming events, so this Thursday night and then Saturday, we have our kindergarten and new student registration. That is actually incorrect, it is not going to be in the cafeteria because it's too confusing to get around. We are actually going to do it in the main office and the nurse's office because they are both so conveniently located by the main entrance. So we will do that. March 20th, our report cards are available on Parent Portal. No School on Friday the 3rd due to a superintendent's conference day and then the following week, we have April Break or Spring recess. And then just to give a preview, the 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, we have our kindergarten first and second grade ice cream social and open houses. They're all from 6:00 to 7:30. We will also host our book fair that night. It's just going to be, put it all in together and see how it all comes out, so. Yep, any questions?
Thank you very much, man. We appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Hit the button and choose next.
Oh, I choose French Road!
What a shock! Welcome, Allison.
Thank you. Lots going on at French Road too, since we were last here together. And as Matt mentioned, we also had a fantastic trip to Israel with many people in this room, actually, tonight. These are some pictures of our partner school in Balim in Modiin, Israel, and it was such an amazing opportunity to be there and connect with our school. So just sharing a few pictures of our school here, they welcomed us and were so excited to have us there. The students who Lonnie Mazurawski's class had been communicating with over the course of the school year couldn't just believe that she was there. She was such a celebrity. They, whenever we toured another classroom, they would say, "Can Lonnie come back?" Because they had been communicating with her all year and were so excited she was actually there.
People wanted selfies taken with her.
Selfies taken with her. I know, I was chubbing.
Pretty big worldwide.
And that's what they call you there, your first name, so Lonnie. So that's a picture of our partner class in the bottom there. They're in sixth grade now. They were also the partner class that Lonnie worked with last year. So although she is new students, the kids have known her for two years, which has been, which was really great. We found lots of connections that we wanted to continue with French Road and also many new things. So one of this highlights some of the things that we did together with the students, but one of my favorite things was spending time in third grade with third graders who were doing the exact same lessons that we were doing in our third grade science unit. So here are some of the third graders in Balim School, looking at seeds and planting different plants, taking measurements, doing the same exact lessons that we are doing at French Road. So opened the window for lots of new things that we could try together. They had some dog training in their school as well, a little bit different than us. They have a class on actually how to train a dog to build some leadership in kids and there was a lot of work around mindfulness. So that's a picture on the right of students meditating in class and practicing mindfulness. So there were many different things that we thought we could bring back to French Road that we do already, that we would not have known of if we didn't go there. And Lonnie and I had the opportunity to share with faculty yesterday at our meeting, some of our traveling and experiences and just such a great experience. We had Read Across America Day to kick off our Read Across America Week and we had many, many different guest readers come to French Road. This is just a sampling of some of the people who came and the kids love this day. It starts off our week of reading spirit and just celebrates reading and the joy that it brings to everybody. This is Mr. McVeigh, our librarian, who jumped right onto our Friends Rocks Reading Week and every class in French Road participated in a book tasting. So he had menus out in the library with lots of different books that kids could read and try as a book tasting. So they would come in during their scheduled library time, they would get a taste of lots of different books that they hadn't seen before. As you can see, Mr. McVeigh dressed up because we were Starbucks and a beautiful sign in the back made by Lonnie, "We love books a latte." The library looked adorable and all week long, we had kids, every single class at French Road came through and got to do a book tasting. We celebrated Brighton Believes Day as well and for this day, we focused on our continued work with Food Link and the Backpack Program. We started a Be the Change Challenge about a week before Brighton Believes Day and students brought in change to put into different containers in the building to try and raise money to give to the Backpack Program. They raised almost $600 in change, which is awesome, and they got to put the money in different jars with things that would happen around the school. And the winning jar was that Ms. O'Neil and I will start the day on the roof, dressed in costumes, on Friday, March 20th, and we will be dressed as bees for Be the Change. So stay tuned for that. We're hoping for a nice day out that day and we are going to greet the kids. They are so excited about this.
Are we going to livestream that?
Yeah, of course, all livestream anything. Dan Goldman's going to take care of all that for us. He's on it already. In addition, they worked on bookmarks and positive notes to bring to Rochester City School District kids who were in the Backpack Program so that in addition to the food going in their backpack, they would have some positivity come in their way too in a bookmark that they could use. Fun times ahead still, March 20th. We had, a couple of weeks ago, the Ying Quartet come to perform for us at French Road and it was a really specially, special assembly because Nathaniel is a fifth grader, Nathaniel Ying is a fifth grader at French Road in Mary Dubois's class, so he had family members there, his father and family members, performing. And also for our kids to have this experience, just up close and personal in the NPR, asking questions, hearing about, you know, learning about the journey that they had on the way to become the Ying Quartet, the different experiences they had performing at the White House and how they won a Grammy and all sorts of great things that our kids were just so impressed with. So that was through a grant that Lori Ischam and Leah Kettlecamp did together. Great experience. We're working on our yearbook right now, just a few pictures of our student council, working on our yearbook cover contest where we had probably 150 entries, lots of kids wanting to be part of that, which was exciting. And I just wanted to highlight this lesson that I saw in a classroom, Rachel Kazoff, because we have some great work going on at French Road. This is just one example of a teacher who is working with Dr. Duell Maples from St. John Fisher on critical literacy and several teachers in the building are working with Dr. Maples in a voluntary professional development after school once a month, trying out some different texts in the classroom that look at controversial topics or things we typically don't talk about with kids. And for this lesson, Rachel talked about perspective and thinking about the characters in the text and perspectives in the text through the lens of critical literacy. And the students were so engaged in this work, so just wanted to share some of the great things happening with them. We have lots of upcoming events. Tonight, we have our fourth grade strings concert that is happening right now. We have our summer activities fair. We have a meeting with the principal at the same time as the summer activities fair, hoping that people will want to come for both events. We're going to be looking at social media and the elementary student and I'll be presenting with Janice Mix, who is our health teacher. We have ice cream socials coming up for third grade and fourth grade, new family reception. We have a red band concert coming up soon and then we'll end the month with our science and social studies fair, which is an exciting time for our kids right before break. Questions?
Thank you so much. Thank you for sharing all the photos and the info on the trip to Israel.
Absolutely.
Big group out over there. We missed everybody that evening, actually, our last meeting, we were a little.
We wished we were here.
We were so happy that you all were able to do it and make it and continue that connection with all of our partner schools over there, so thanks.
It was amazing. Thank you.
Next up, following order, 12 Quirks Middle School, Rod Thomas.
It was 50/50 whether it was going to be the high school or not.
I know.
I'm really honored, Allison, thank you.
I'm going to get that button so we can.
Been busy at the middle school. Just before the February break, we had just one day fundraiser for the Al Segal Center. These students were, some of the kids helping to collect for the day. We raised just over $100, but it was really a nice way to prepare them for just our day of caring later on in March. We also had the district-wide strings concert at the high school, of course, all the grade levels, in the gym. It's one of my favorite events of the year. Activity nights have started again. This Friday will be our sixth grade activity night. We had seventh last Friday. Please remember, the sixth grade activity night this Friday has been moved till 6:00 PM, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, instead of the 7:00 to 9:00, to help a program that's coming in on Saturday get set up the night before. Not the kids' help, but to help them have time to set up. So our sixth graders will be six.
It's going to be the activity.
Six to eight PM this Friday. Our Quebec trip had a successful journey. We left a little earlier than expected to avoid some weather on Route 81. They made it free and clear, got to Quebec and had some great cultural experiences in Quebec City. We have a TCMS science team that Calvin Knight coaches and he took the, this group to the regional competition in Buffalo. And not only did they win the competition, they won every single category and qualified for an all-expense trip to Houston or to Dallas for the championships, the national championships. So a really phenomenal group of kids that have been practicing very hard with Calvin at the U of R. Our day of caring brought in 36 guest speakers from around the community, all different agencies that talked about what they're doing to give back to the community and support other people in our community. Great messages from the volunteers, the students appreciated it, the teachers were very impressed and this kicked off our Souls for Souls collection of slightly worn shoes that we're collecting in our atrium and a bin has already been filled up. We're collecting them really quickly and encourage anybody who can donate to do so. We also had the Best Buddies Inclusion Day. Sarah Potter and Lori Whiter run this organization, pairing students together that may not always have a best buddy in school and really making everybody feel like they belong, which is a great message for all of us. Thanks to Martha Shiromano for the Festival of Ideas this past Saturday, tons of kids from French Road and the middle school participated in a whole bunch of activities. You guys probably know the number better than I, but I was so happy to see so many kids enjoying the afternoon Saturday, thanks to Martha and all the people that worked there. And just last night, we had the Vocal Prism Concert. Again, the sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade choral students joined the high school students and it's great to see the progression and the changes as the kids do move up through the middle to the high school. And I really, I was really impressed with Jessica Badia's TCMS show choir. They did a great job. We have a program, the Heart and Soul Program, which is a girls-on-the-run to help build confidence and fitness in ladies in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. They're starting pretty soon. We've put this in the E! News, but we're really encouraging signup. You don't have to be a runner or an athlete to participate, but we do hope we have a lot of kids join that group, which Lori Whiter is also coaching. We've, the TCMS PTSA book fair has already kicked off this week, some great selections. Be sure to swing by the library, look for the times and dates in the flyers that go home. Some of the upcoming events, one that I really want to draw your attention to is the TCMS Strong Mentor Applications, the last day before spring break. We are heavily recruiting seventh graders to be mentors when they become eighth graders for the incoming sixth graders and students who are new to the school. So please talk to your seventh grader about completing an application, getting that into Mrs. Kugel and helping build the culture and the connections at the middle level for our newest students. That's it from the middle school.
Thank you very much, Rod. We appreciate it.
Now we have to hear from the high school.
I guess it's the only building left and the only principal's still in the room, so we need to hear from him. Dr. Hall and Brighton High School.
Proper greeting. Good evening. So we start out, just like some of the other buildings did with the Brighton Believes Day, and that was one of our pictures, I think Dan took from the upper booth in the gym, of the sandwich-making that was happening in the gymnasium and Friends Rachel and the football team sponsored those activities. So I just want to highlight the advisors and the clubs who really made our day quite an incredible day. Our national club, Phil Hockey Teams, they-
Our national club, Phil Hockey Teams, they took on the ninth grade class. All the ninth graders were in homerooms, uh, doing blessing bags for the Rochester refugees, helping refugees. Jess Wosman, Jen Wheeler, tag teamed that with all of their students, got the supplies together. Um, we had counselors who were teaming up with them and administrator went with each grade level. And then all the homeroom teachers and all the students back in their homerooms doing these projects together for the, about the hour that we had them for an assembly. Tenth grade class council and girl up, uh, sponsored the 10th grade activity with fleece blankets to Owen's House and Open Door Mission. And Melissa Loane and Rachel Rivera, Susan Crowley, teachers who were involved in that and give up a lot of time as advisors and, you know, working with our students to promote these projects and get them going for, you know, 1,200 students who are actively involved for that hour doing service. Um, our 11th grade was sponsored by the Key Club and Andrea Doyle, um, no slip socks for Owen House, Open Door Mission and Rochester General Hospital. And 12th grade and special homerooms were all in the gym with friends of Rachel and the football team who sponsored bag lunches for Open Door Mission. Just take a look at what they completed during an hour of time. Uh, 30 fleece blankets, 300 blessing bags, 600 pairs of socks, uh, letters that were written, so when kids finished the projects, they wrote supportive letters for veterans. Um, 900 bag lunches with peanut butter and jelly sandwiches and all sorts of other goodies. Nicole Vandermead was instrumental in getting donations for us to do that. And the Nancy Beck Fund, uh, helped fund for a lot of our projects as well. Um, and then several or 200 plus thank you notes that were written by kids to faculty K-12 and staff, thanking them for what they do.
That's fantastic.
So there's one of the, I thought this captured it all. Exciting, lot of, lot happening in the gym. Um, here are fleece blankets in the homerooms, creating fleece blankets for Owen's House. Uh, the socks that they decorate, put together, it's always a popular one. Blessing bags and card writing. And it's just an incredible day and just want to, again, thank the, uh, Nancy Beck Fund and our PTSA and all of the, uh, the, uh, students and faculty who participated. And, uh, this year, we added our exec council who helped us in the brains of the operation 262 to get things going. Theo did a nice job in there. Thank you. We had four exchanges out. Eighty-two plus people were out over February break. I'm glad we went in February and not in April. But we went to all of these different countries, uh, Germany, Spain, Israel, uh, Switzerland and France. And just one picture from each group. Uh, the Germans are coming this Friday, uh, for their trip here to the US to be with our families. Um, they had 10-plus days in Germany, visiting all sorts of sites all, all over Germany. Our AP Euro kids this year, instead of going to Eastern Europe, were primarily in Switzerland and in France. That was a picture that they took hours before the one we took in Spain, which is in front of the aqueducts in France. And here in Israel, uh, overlooking in Tel Aviv, all the Israeli students who were there. And then in Spain, we were in Segovia underneath the aqueducts or parts of Segovia. So it was kind of interesting. We, we were there in Spain and we had our French students taking a very similar picture in front of their aqueducts. But for all the advisors who chaperoned, Chris French, Jen Wheeler, um, Viv Lopez French, Suzanne Crowley, Rachel Rivera, Brendan Quinn, Carrie Crowley, John Clements and Marla Taplinger just, you know, they give up, I mean, they get to go on the trip, but you're in charge of 20-plus students, you know, in another country. And it's a pretty big responsibility. Um, and just it's, kids were great and they had a great time. And I'm just so glad that you support us in doing this. Um, I know a lot of the principal friends that I'm with in Monroe County, it's, a lot of the exchange trips and trips abroad, it's very difficult to get those going and I just appreciate your support with that. So thank you. Yes to the dress, huge success this year again, even though it was in the library and not in the auditorium. Julian and her crew did a fabulous job. Well over a hundred different dresses went, um, men's clothing as well. So it says, say yes to the dress, but shirts, ties, shoes, just street clothes, they brought the best of the best. And students were in there shopping all day long and took home many different things. And, you know, they're tailoring them and suiting them up and getting things ready right there, um, on campus and kids could take them home with them. So it was just an incredible event, a lot of volunteers and just a fun, fun, special day. And we're highlighted, I think, on Channel Eight, Dan shared with me, uh, for, um, one of their awards that they show in the morning. So kudos to all of those folks. Rob Stole Thunder District Strings Concert, so a couple of different pictures there of the hundreds of kids in that environment, just a phenomenal night. District Prism Concert was last night in the gym at the high school. Again, get a lot of use in that gymnasium this year. And I'm going to save my homework presentation for April, because I think I've talked probably for enough right now. And I'm gonna move to the end. March 19th, first ever 11th grade parent night, uh, 6:30 at the high school, or I'm sorry, at the middle school auditorium. Parents have asked for a junior night that gives a lot of the information that parents would have normally gotten in the fall with the senior night. So we've moved things back up, giving juniors and junior parents, uh, their, the information they need to prepare for the rest of the spring and the summer and into the fall. And with the college process moving up ever, uh, so increasingly early every year, this is good information to do. And I just, you know, for the parents who've been asking for this, it's coming. So hopefully we'll have a, plenty of parents out that night. Lot of events on the docket, um, coming up. We have our PTSA, uh, it's a special ed meeting on the March 25th, if you're available at noon. And about it. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Tom. We appreciate that.
All right. And we have the middle school come back up.
Middle school's gonna, let's see if we paid attention. We'll have Rob come back up. No, I'm just kidding. All right, thank you very much, as always. We do appreciate the look inside all four of the buildings and different individual stories that you all share. So thank you so much. Uh, we move then to our reports section this evening. We have our financial report, which is, um, the executive summary budget status report dated the 5th of March, prepared by Lou, along with the treasures report for the period ending January 31st, prepared by Dahlia and Lou. So, uh, does anyone have any questions or comments or, do we have a motion to receive the reports, please?
Still moved.
Second.
Approved or, uh, moved by Karen, seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our student representative report, Theo.
So Dr. Hall covered a lot in his presentation, so to avoid redundancy, I'm gonna keep it pretty short. Uh, for one, I don't think any of the principal mentioned, uh, our Festival of Ideas, which happened this last Saturday. It's a fantastic event. Uh, community members of all ages came out. We had third through eighth graders attending various events with a multiple, multitude of diverse, you know, areas. And then high schoolers and other volunteers, uh, came and presented, so that was, uh, good and helped out. Uh, the district wide concerts, most of, both the Vocal Prism Concert and the String Concerts were mentioned. Uh, I just want to reiterate the fact that they were livestreamed. And I think the students definitely appreciate that facet and hope for the continuation of it so that, uh, their parents and relatives can support them, um, even though they might not be able to come. Students are, we're entering March, this is, seems to be like the first full, you know, month of school without any breaks, uninterrupted. So, uh, we're getting in our grind mode. And then lastly, I just want to mention that winter sports are virtually over and we had a very successful winter season with, uh, sectional and state winners across several different sports. And then, uh, this Monday, spring sports got great weather for their first practice of the season, so that's it.
Fantastic. Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
And I appreciate you mentioning the one note, and, uh, we've talked about it a little bit, but maybe not quite enough, but the live streaming this year especially, the increased live streaming was many of the, uh, performing arts events as we've been able to do. And certainly thanks to all of our folks at the Visual Performing Arts Department and Mike and, and our principals and all of our, uh, video and technical crew to be able to make that happen. You know, one of the elements, of course, uh, the primary element this year has been, uh, the construction, the ongoing in the Brighton High School Auditorium. I know no one's heard of that, but, uh, the, uh, the ability to find space to hold all of these events so that kids aren't missing out, but then that limits a lot of the seating in, in, in many situations and the spaces that we're using. And then also getting into flu season and then the ongoing situation right now with crowds and, uh, whether or not to gather in crowds. So our ability to stream and put that together live and then also archived has really been well received by the community. We've heard from a number of families who've appreciated the fact that, uh, especially those that might not travel out and about as well, be as mobile as others, are able to enjoy the concerts. Extended families are able to enjoy the concerts out of town. So our thanks as a board to all the folks within the district that have made that work and continue to make that work as we go through the remainder of the year. So, and we'll continue to use that ability to the extent that we're able for as many events as we're able to do, so. Our, our standing committee reports from the Board of Education, Monroe County School Boards. We just reported out on the three committees two weeks ago, uh, pretty extensively, but, uh, Labor Relations, uh, met on the 26th of February, which would have been, uh, the day after we actually met. And I know Marv was not able to make that meeting. Uh, I don't, I wasn't able, I don't think any of us were there. And that was a, uh, a presentation on what every Board of Education member should understand with regard to reserve funds. I think we've had a pretty good education in Brighton over the past, uh, few years and we're fortunate with Lou and our audit committee work on that, so. Coming up at the March 25th meeting is the annual Health Insurance Consortium update. So, uh, that's usually a pretty well-intended, uh, well-intended event. Information Exchange, uh, we reported out, we actually caught up at a couple of different meetings when we last met. Tomorrow is March 11th.
Sadie Fisher's.
Sadie Fisher, we talked about that a little bit, uh, when we last met, but the program tomorrow on unconscious bias at noon. So, uh, that should be very interesting. And as I mentioned, we, we did help facilitate that. So hopefully, I know that there's a pretty good signup for it and hopefully that will lead to more programming around that subject matter. That's the intent with School Boards Association. Legislative Committee, we actually did meet, um, the fourth, so last week. That was the debrief of the Legislative Breakfast. Uh, it was also a lengthy discussion on this advocacy rebranding that Karen and I have brought to the group. The idea that we decided to not, uh, make the two-day trip to Albany this year, given a number of factors. Uh, one of those primary ones being, of course, the fact that so many of our, um, members of the Assembly and the Senate are choosing not to continue in their roles, uh, or have retired or.
Or have already left.
Or in our case, our Assembly seat is vacant right at the moment. Um, although I remind folks that staff is still on, on, on the scene. So we did talk about how we're gonna go about increasing our level of advocacy locally and then also beginning to plan into next year as far as further reach out beyond our Monroe County representatives to those who are in power in Albany, who may be receptive to messaging around those issues affecting public education. We also had an update on local appointments. And there is a series of local appointments that we're putting into place specific to our representation. Uh, we don't have a member of Assembly, so there won't be an appointment scheduled likely locally with staff, but, uh, there will be an appointment with Joe Robach. There is an appointment this Friday with Harry Bronson. If anyone would like to attend that, there's space still available and that's Friday morning at nine, let the office know. So that's where things are with Legislative Committee. I don't have an update from Marv on BOSI's. As a matter of fact, I think the report he gave two weeks ago has probably covered their last meeting. They have an upcoming meeting. And we did do other board member reports rather quickly last time, and it's only been the intervening gap of two weeks, but if there's anything anybody has to share or seen is or anything.
Extended Studies Committee met.
Okay.
Finished up their analysis. We, um, read from multicultural gifted education and the entire, now, the evaluation, a lot of it was on equity and, um, how we couldn't provide services across, you know, for all children in all different ways. So it was a really good, um, discussion and, um, coming together of all the information from this semester and then they'll report to the board in April, I think. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you for the update on that. Andrew, anything new?
Uh, nothing new. I think, you know, we, several of us were at the Diversity and Equity Meeting last week and then we broke out into our own groups, I am in the special ed group, so just continuing our work.
Summary, we had a summary.
Summary.
Beginning of the meeting and then back into our subcommittee work, which is quite extensive and ongoing, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Larry, anything new?
No, we updated from Audit Committee last time and you may be aware, construction continues in a number of our buildings.
I understand that. And I do remind folks again, if you haven't gone by Council Rock, you really need to go over there. That's, that's really a new school. It's really incredible, the progress being made over there and the very dramatic, different view of that building now. And it's really quite incredible, so folks should take a ride by there and take a look. Not at drop off or pickup time.
Very much.
Off times would be great, so thank you. Karen, anything new?
Um, I was able to attend Diversity Equity along with, with several of yous, as was mentioned, and worked with the Family Engagement Committee on redesigning a survey for our new families to talk about, um, how they feel engaged by our community and what we could do better. So, good work.
Fantastic. Julian?
I, I just would like to add to all the reports about say yes to the dress is a special thank you to everybody who gave up their spaces and helped us that day, um, because there is not an auditorium in the high school because of the construction that Larry just mentioned.
Rumor has it.
Rumor has it.
Yeah.
Um, we had to find some, some alternative space and we were in the part of the lower library and the, uh, skills lab. And it, we so appreciated the fact that we displaced students, we displaced teachers, and they were so cooperative and helpful. And I just want to say thank you to them and thank you to Rob Luce and his crew because without them, we couldn't do it. They transport everything from Brookside the day before and we come in and set it up on Wednesday. The event takes place on Thursday and it's all back in Brookside by Friday. So thanks to everybody who made it possible. It was a, it was a great day.
That's fantastic. And for all of those of you that volunteer year-round to make it work and those that donate, uh, year-round to make it work too.
And we always, we always take donations of.
Take donations all the time.
Prom and formal clothes, as well as, as, um, other gently used clean clothes, um, at Brookside School. There are bins in the front of this building, uh, and then there are bins in Brookside when the, when Brighton Wardrobe is not open. So thank you.
We should probably remind everybody again, right after ball and prom, right? That that's a.
Yes.
Sorry, time to be thinking about it and cleaning out, so.
If you're home, home during spring break and cleaning your closets, we were always getting ready for next year.
There you go.
Yep. Thank you.
A couple of different things I just wanted to quickly highlight. Uh, I was able to read the two different classes at Fresno on Read Across America Day, as we always talk about. Reading, especially at Front Row and Council Rock, is one of the true delights of this high-paying job that we all have. And, um, the kids are fantastic. They so appreciate, uh, all of us that come in and the whole wide array of community members that volunteer their time to come in and read. And they're such an attentive audience always and, uh, it's just truly a joy to be able to do that. So, so that was fun and thank you. And on a much more serious note, I will mention, and Dr. McGowan will get into it here shortly, uh, I was, I'm part of District Wide Safety Team. We met yesterday for quite a lengthy meeting with a very large group of folks, probably 40 of us. Kevin will go into more detail, but we basically took total review and total stock of all the guidance from the State Education Department, the State of New York and the Monroe County with regard to COVID-19 and coronavirus and how schools and how the county is moving forward. And, uh, went through all of our step-by-step approach and plans. And most of you, I hope, have seen those emails that have gone out from the district, from Kevin to parents and staff and will continue to be updated as, as necessary. But that was, that was a great meeting and all parties at the table and really some great thoughts and great brainstorming expressed over our plans moving forward. So that was, uh, that was a great meeting, needed to be held. And again, I was happy to help at Festival of Ideas, it was mentioned, on Saturday. That's such a 31st year.
Seven hundred kids.
Large, 700 and some kids, a huge group of volunteers that work on that year-round to make it work, and then a larger group that make it happen that day. Not only those that facilitate all the different sessions, but all the students and parents and community members who volunteer that day and make it happen. So again, we talk about those things that are Brighton, and that's one of those truly great things. So that's, that's that for me. So I will move to our Brighton Teachers Association report. Nicole?
Great.
Speaking of great things Brighton and all that, right?
Aw, thank you.
Well, I meant you, but I meant all of you who reported out.
Okay. So I'll start with Council Rock. Kindergarten students in Mrs. Tiss's class are doing STEAM activities. They learned about President Lincoln, and they did a building challenge with Lincoln Logs to design and build a one-room house. They've also been listening to stories read by astronauts from the, that are living on the International Space Station, and they heard a story called Astronaut Annie, which was read by an astronaut named Annie, and talked about persistence and how anything is possible. We're lucky enough that we have a connection with meteorologist John Hitchcock, who's from the National Weather Service, and he came into the Extended Studies Groups and taught them about hurricanes. And then they had an engineering activity to try and build models of hurricane-resistant buildings. So great things happening in Extended Studies. A repeat from some of the other principal presentations, the Ying Quartet came to Fraz, and the Brighton Education Fund helped to make that happen, so shout out to them. And then the book tasting was the other thing that was shared. Twelve Corners, 13 of the TCMS Wind and Percussion Students were selected for all county band and orchestra. The festival's going to be at Webster Schrader High School this weekend. BHS, BHL, it's a repeat of the Say Yes to the Dress. 200 items were, I think, taken, over 200. So yeah, again, thank you to everyone who worked on that. The Virtual Enterprise Businesses, Intents, that's in and then tent, like attempt, Camping and Designer Drip were named of the top 50 of virtual enterprise groups. VE International, it's a course where the class operates as a business and then sells its products to other schools across the country, and some even internationally. They excelled in their sales, buying other products, and keeping accounting records. And then another repeat of the Ford Exchange Trips, and you saw those pictures that were in there. And then the Poetry Out Loud Competition, there was one held at, at the high school. The winners of that competed at SUNY Brockport in a regional, and one student is moving on to the state competition, which is going to be in Manhattan last weekend. So probably that winner, we'll see how she did, I don't know. Maybe Dr. Hall knows how she did. And those pictures are there. And then a congrats to BHS seniors Hayden Lieb and Henry Berger. They qualified for the national semifinals for the 2020 U.S. Physics Olympiad. Fewer than 400 students in the United States score high enough to reach this level. And then there was another student, Sophia, I'm not going to try and say her last name, Stefan Kovac, was the highest-scoring junior on the test. So Hayden and Henry will go on to the next level of competition.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And our PTSA report, Leslie?
Well, we don't really have much news since we reported just a couple of weeks ago, but-
Makes it easier. We all have two weeks only in terms of remember all the activities and put them together right now.
So some of this, I'm just going to talk about Brighton Believes and what the PTSA did, because, but first I'll start with Central PTSA. We are hosting a viewing of the film Beyond Measure, which is about transforming our education system. It'll be at the JCC on Tuesday, March 5th at 7:00 PM. Sangita, our president, would like to extend an invitation for the Board to come and join in the viewing. We will be voting to approve the budget at our April meeting, and then we'll be sending out postcards to the community about the district vote following our vote. So for Brighton Believes Day and the PTSA, this is all going to be a little redundant, but Council Rocks Brighton Believe, PTSA Chairs, Miranda Stefano and Heidi Varrassi, organized parent volunteers and donations. Parents donated supplies used in some of the projects that the students did, and then delivered them to the organizations being helped. The parents said that the organizations were overwhelmed with gratitude at what was dropped off. They dropped off things that included snack bags, fleece-type blankets, hygiene kits, and cards for children and braided dog toys. At French Road, PTSA Chair Amy Connors had joined the Brighton Believes Committee in the planning of Brighton Believes Day, and she designed the bookmarks that the students colored, and then her and her son delivered those bookmarks to food links that are going to go in backpacks of weakened food that's given out to RCSD students. At TCMS, parents planned and executed the reception for the 30-plus speakers that came to TCMS for various local nonprofits to talk about how to help in our community. They supplied snacks, decorations, and gift bags for the presenters. There's some pictures of the flower arrangements they made and the little signs. And at the high school, Daphne Cohen was the one in charge of organizing parent volunteers, who had the opportunity to volunteer in classrooms, helping all the students with the great projects they did. That's it.
Fantastic. Thank you. We appreciate that update and all the folks who volunteer every single day. Dr. McGowan, Superintendent's Report.
So you can talk about all the things I said you didn't talk about.
Yes, I've been writing them down fairly, as you mentioned.
It's May, sorry. Thank you.
A few items first. Yes, we have had ongoing conversations, as you mentioned, regarding coronavirus, and this has been actually in some ways for several weeks, been thinking about response and following events all over the place, and then consulting with the people that we work with, the contacts that we have, the agencies that we are supposed to work with on that. We have tried to find the right balance between panic, which is certainly prevalent, understandably so, and being reasonable and rational. Safety's always our first priority, and so approaching this in a way that takes into account all of the right information and makes the necessary preparations is really important, in an informed, reasonable way. So where we've landed, first of all, is as you mentioned to me with the safety team. And then today we met with the response team to go further, take feedback from the safety team, and dig further into that and make additional plans. And that constitutes many of our administrators, district-level and building-wise, and vital service providers, the leaders in each of those areas. So Rob Lewis, John Avelli, Nicole Vandermeade in Food Service, Lisa Hartman in HR, Tom Hyman from the Transportation Department, so to give you a sense for kind of the broad scope of the conversation. All of that was built on information that we received on Saturday in a briefing with Dr. Mendoza and emergency service managers here in the county, hosted by County Executive Adam Bello and Congressman Morelli. So we're able to take all that information and really think through, what is our pandemic planning here? What are our preparations, and what do we need to do right now to be proactive and then reactive when that time comes? And really, that's focused on a few things for us. The communities receive this information in email and more detail, as has the staff. But we really started with containment. So what can we do to be a part of that conversation and follow the recommendations that are being made? And that has to do with what they're referring to as NPIs, or non-pharmaceutical interventions. Wash your hands appropriately and the right way. Use hand sanitizer when that's not available to you. Respiratory etiquette, and essentially paying attention, social distancing is another that we'll get into as well, and then paying attention to symptoms. And the symptoms of coronavirus are very similar to flu, so feverish, coughing, respiratory symptoms, and it's transferred by respiratory droplets. So just being aware of those types of symptoms as well. While focusing on that internally and thinking about a few key factors, we've been thinking then about cleaning and disinfecting, and we check to make sure that the guidelines that the state is recommending, we are following, and that is the case. And then we've ramped that up as well, thinking about high-touch surfaces, and how do we increase our cleaning in those areas, and then have additional procedures around hand washing and disinfecting, whether that's devices, additional surfaces, and make sure when kids come in in the morning, we wash hands. And we talk a lot about that with kids and that lesson of how to do that the right way. Meanwhile, communicating to our families and reviewing the protocol being suggested by the state, and both the State Education Department and the Department of Health around cancellations, closures, potential closures, and then thinking about cancellations of travel and trips as well. A lot of people have asked good questions with many groups in our community, closing or canceling, closing down or canceling events or working from home, et cetera, why our action might be different. We're working together with all of the 20 other school districts in Monroe County to really review every step we're taking and think carefully about all the ramifications, and that's on a daily basis, we're having that conversation. We have different parameters than other organizations. We have a different audience than other organizations, who may have concerns around the more vulnerable in their population that may not exist in our population. All different reasons why agencies will have closings and cancellations. We are currently reviewing those same aspects. Somewhat it is counterintuitive to cancel, for example, a concert with 400 people when you're going to have school the next day with 1,200 people in close proximity. And we feel at this point, we're not there yet, although we are reviewing that on a daily basis. In terms of travel, we are considering where groups are going, what the prevalence of coronavirus is in that area, what the potential is for quarantine, all the ramifications of canceling versus supporting trips. It's complicated, whether it's in Monroe County, outside Monroe County, outside New York State. We do not have any international trips planned between now and the end of the year, so fortunately, that's a decision point we don't need to think about. People will be asking a lot of questions, for example, travel over the April break, and how will we monitor that, and what does that mean? The guidance is changing almost on a daily basis, and as we get closer to that point, we'll have more information for people. A lengthy email went out to the community today with more information. We're posting all that information also on the website, and we'll keep each of these updates on the website. Our response team is meeting every Tuesday right now, or as needed, if we need to meet sooner, and we will update the community again next Tuesday, and if need be, the Tuesday after that, and the Tuesday after that. That will be kind of our scheduled time to provide updates to the community. I think it's important to think about, one, the role that we can all play in that. So hand washing, keeping an eye on symptoms. When you are feverish, this is the guidance we give people all the time, flu-like symptoms, stay home. That should have always been the case, but it's a reminder to people, flu-like symptoms, particularly fever, stay home. I know it sounds crazy, but we remind people, this apparently is something that young people do, we did not realize, don't use tissues twice, use them once. Pediatricians have told us, young kids are notorious for using them more than one time. That and my grandmother used to do that too.
She's sticking in their sleeve.
In their sleeve, like for later. You really don't need to save that. Good thing, but.
So Dr. McGowan said use it once and throw it out.
I should say Grandma Mary, who's alive and well today, does not do that, so in case Grandma Mary is for some reason listening, and not hearing it, but listening, in any case, don't do that. No, she can't hear. Either way.
I would stop talking about that.
Yeah, I probably should. Grandma Mary hears all, actually, in one way, shape, or form or another. Point being, we'll continue to monitor the situation and really reinforce the idea of hand washing and taking the appropriate steps, and we'll monitor on a daily basis where we need to go. I think it's important to point out the lessons that we're reminding kids of, you know, K-12, don't panic, don't be scared, this is not, should not be nightmare-inducing. This is certainly a global concern, preparation is a concern. We hope kids don't have to worry about this on a daily basis. They should take responsibility in those ways that we've mentioned, and think about the things they can do to be more hygienic, and think through how they can stop the spread of any kind of sickness. But it's really important to point that out, and to point out that people around the world in many, many, many countries have experienced this, and this is not the fault of one country, this is not the fault of one group of people. And viruses, believe it or not, don't discriminate, right? They affect all of us equally, and they come from all of us equally if we don't pay attention to hygiene, et cetera. And so discriminatory behaviors around the targeting of individuals or groups can't be, won't be tolerated. I think it was said best in our trapezoid. Our kids, as usual, say it better than anybody. So if people are interested in reading an article about that, take a look at trapezoidbhs.wordpress.com for a great editorial in The Last Trapezoid about that very issue, and think about the way we treat other human beings. And wash your hands often, and stop touching your face, too. As I was on a call to 20 superintendents today, I won't say how many actually had their hand close to their face while having this conversation, but it was a significant number. The other items I just want to mention to you, the, you mentioned the Israel trip and the exchange, that's so important to us, and our classrooms have these great connections. It's been such a beautiful relationship for quite a while now. The Jewish Federation very generously supports that for the adults who travel there. And I point that out again also to say thank you, but in the thought exchange, people had mentioned in the budget conversation, what about support for these? We do not pay for international travel. In fact, some participants in the trip pay for it themselves, if not completely supported by the Federation. And other travel is not some great glorious trip to Spain or Germany. If you supervise children away from home, it's a wonderful experience, but it certainly isn't a free vacation, let's just put it that way. So the district is not paying for trips in any way, shape, or form, but that relationship is so important, and I'm so glad all of you had such a great experience, including Mrs. Yu, of course, too. There's that. I do want to point out, though, there's an email out to Parents Day about the student part of the exchange. So while you were there as adults, the kids were also there, and that's been just wildly successful at the high school. I think 12 kids were there this year. The Israeli kids are coming here October 4th through the 15th next year. It's a great experience to host, and the trip will go on again in the February break next year. It's the trip of a lifetime, and I speak from a parent perspective on that as well. Brighton Believes Day, huge success. Thanks for all your help. Jolene, you've been a big part of that. Andrew's been a big part of that. PTSA has been a huge part of that, making that happen. We're really, really proud of that. It's really a great, great day. And thank you again for everybody's support, and the budget process will continue to work through, coronavirus will continue to work through, and kids will continue to have a great experience each and every day. So, thanks.
Thank you.
I just had one comment on the coronavirus. I work for a large international company. We're meeting every day, and we're learning things every day. So what we're telling people is be patient. It's not that answers are changing, it's that we're learning, we're getting smarter, so that might have us change a course of action or do something different than we thought we were going to do a week ago. So we also preach patience with people, keep giving us your questions, and understand that those answers evolve as we get smarter.
That's a great point.
That's a really good point, Larry. And to reiterate, too, you mentioned it in each of the notifications that we've sent home by email and postings, but we're not in this alone. We're relying on guidance that is updated sometimes multiple times a day from the county and from the state, and even the State Education Department weighs in. So that will be our guidance, and we will follow the letter of the law and make the prudent decisions on a daily basis, so.
We'll all get through it together.
And we all get through it together, and don't shake hands with anybody, maintain your distance, and wash your hands.
Elbows, knuckles, or a little kitten play with the foot. That's all you have to do.
Okay. No shortage of challenges in the current environment, that's for sure. We have a couple of other items of business this evening to take care of. May we have a motion, please, to approve the first read on a policy number 8260 on instruction, Title I, Parent and Family Engagement?
So moved.
That would be moved by Jolene, seconded by Christina. This is part of the Every Student Succeeds Act, that the policy title is changing to supersede the current policy, which then matches up with Title I, as described in the ESSA. Policy changes that we're approving tonight in the first read that have been reviewed internally include expanded collaborations, specifically including family members in addition to parents in education participation efforts. And districts are required to conduct outreach, design and use programs, activities and procedures to engage parents and extended family members, and undertake meaningful discussions with parents and family members on these educational matters. And as you can see in reviewing the policy, which we previously have been given, there's quite a bit of detail in there where it's an eight-page policy, where the updates and revisions have been made. So does anyone have any questions or comments at this first read? And I do remind folks again, as always, this will be open for comment further by the members of the community, or any further members of our staff or review, and the Board, and we'll come back at a later meeting for a second read and approval at that time to become part of policy, so. Is there anything further this evening?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then we have a second first read. Oh, I misread on that one. It was six-page policy. I was looking at the next, next policy. But anyway, a motion, please, for approval of policy 7530. Again, first read, it's a student's policy on child abuse and maltreatment.
So moved.
Moved by Andrea and seconded by Jolene. Again, 7530, this is an eight-page policy, and this is really a very important policy that's been updated with amendment, to effectively include amendments to Section 100.2 of the Commissioner's Regulations that implement the statutory amendments to last year's education law update, which expand mandatory reporters, training, and reporting obligations. So in other words, now this policy- So, in other words, now this policy expands who in the district has the responsibility to report allegations of child abuse, to include not only designated individuals employed by the district, but also any individuals employed by a person or entity that contracts with the school district to provide transportation services. And the amendment also specified what components must be included in that training on reporting allegations of child abuse. And as was noted by one of our board members earlier, this, it always was inferred that board members are within this. Now, it's been specified in here too. And so, as we roll out the training updates and how those become available, whether they be electronic, whether they be in-person, those will be made available to board members also to take advantage of that training.
Do you think Monroe County school boards will have any-
My guess is it's going to be through the BOSI's groups. That's been the discussion thus far, but I think it's yet to be determined fully. So, that's the, and again, this is the eight-page one I'm sorry, I was referring earlier and you'll see the highlighted changes along the way. Does anybody have any questions or any comment further on this policy? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And again, we'll, these will be open for current further review and will come back to us at a second read at a future meeting date. Then may we have a motion, please, for approval of the Cooperative Bid for Art Supplies that's dated March 10th from Lou Alimo?
So moved.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Larry. Again, as is in our common practice, this is a cooperative bid through BOSI's too for art supplies, as you've seen in the bid recommended to us and cover the period April 1st, 2020 through March 31st, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And also this evening, we seek a motion to approve a intermunicipal agreement for Shared Food Services Director. May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Andrea and seconded by Christina. And as you've seen in reading through this, and if there's any questions, we can ask Lou and Kevin, but essentially, this is pretty common within Monroe County, food service directors to be shared. And so, I'm assuming, Lou, that East Rochester approached us to seek out whether we would be interested in working on an arrangement to share Nicole Vandermead's position partly with them. And you'll see it's very specifically laid out here in terms of her responsibilities there, compensation involved to the district, and responsibilities to us. And as I say, this is becoming the norm sort of throughout Monroe County and maybe throughout the state. Part of it being the extensive requirements now to be a full food service director and a lot of the work that's developed and evolved around it is common to all school districts, you know? So, is there any further question on it? Has anybody covered that, Lou? There's anything further on that? Yep. So, all right, everybody's good? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Another motion, please, for approval of our consent agenda this evening?
So moved.
Second.
And we have one gift to acknowledge tonight. We are thanks, we give our thanks to Karen Beck-Pooley and Andy Beck for a very nice gift to the Brighton High School Boys Volleyball Team in memory of John Boyd. So, we thank them for their generosity. And a motion, or we have a motion. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Board members, any other items of business this evening? Dr. McGowan?
No.
All right, then, prior to adjourning, I remind folks that we have a community budget forum next Thursday, the 19th, here in the boardroom, and then we next meet here in regular session on March 24th. So, motion, please, to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Jolene, seconded by-
Andrea.
Andrea. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone, we're adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.